Call us to order at 6 o'clock. Michelle, since she might be late, she may just join us in the executive session. So call us to order at 6 o'clock. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F. The chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media will be recording us tonight. Is anyone else planning to record? Does the panel, if you could just identify yourself? And if you're an attendee planning to record, if you could raise your hand, that would be helpful. Okay, seeing none. Then next thing is item two, motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of, one, approving the minutes of the executive session held on April 26, 2021; two, to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A; three, to discuss negotiation strategy with non-union administration; and four, to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the bus drivers' union. Before we do the motion, just, I know there are some people on the call. We're going into executive session. We'll reconvene at 7:00 for the rest of the agenda, just so you know. See, may want to come back. So with that being said, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on April 26, 2021, to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, to discuss negotiation strategy with non-union administration, and to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the bus drivers' union, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, who is that?
Ness.
Yes, okay, thanks, Ness. Okay, so all in favor? Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos? Carlos, you muted. Sorry, it has to be audible, can you just?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Aye, aye, aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Aye. And Liza?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Okay, so we will be going into executive session and we will be back at 7:00 PM. Thanks, everyone. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media is recording. If anyone else is recording, if you're on the panel, if you could just unmute yourself, and if you are, if you're calling in, if you could just raise your hand and let us know. Okay, seeing none, I just wanted to also note that I'm joined tonight, I'm participating remotely, and I'm joined tonight by my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Libby Luwicky, and Liza O'Reilly on the school committee. So before we get started tonight, as many, as many or all of you know, we had town meeting last weekend, and on behalf of the school committee, I just want to thank all of the voters at town meeting for unanimously supporting the school department budget for our fiscal year '22. We all voted, voted to invest in a budget that will meet the needs of all students and help them recover from the learning loss caused by a once-in-a-lifetime global pandemic. And we especially want to thank our colleagues on the advisory committee, the select board, the town and school department administration and staff, and all of the Hingham Public Schools' parents for their assistance and engagement in a thoughtful budget process during, this has been an extremely challenging year. Our students were dismissed from school on March 12th, 2020, as usual, and overnight lost the structure and many of the social connections on which they rely. Accordingly, when we started this year's budget process, we focused on two areas where students were most impacted: academic achievement and social emotional health and skills. We also knew it was crucial to address our persistent academic achievement gap between all Hingham students and our high-need students, which was greatly exacerbated by the pandemic. The budget we approved at town meeting will provide the necessary supports and services to help our students recover, and the tiered system of academic support that the school department will build will benefit the district and our town for years to come. We do understand that increasing personnel carries risks. If we're unable to continue funding these new hires, we'll have some very difficult decisions to make next year. But we're committed to ensuring that every dollar spent is used efficiently and effectively. And we will be initiating our five-year strategic plan very soon, and the process will involve the entire community, so we hope you'll participate. Over the years, the town of Hingham has benefited greatly from the reputation of our schools. The word "schools" is even incorporated into our town seal. We value education, we value community, we value our children. We again want to thank everyone for voting in favor of a budget that supports those values. I also want to say before we get started that this is Libby Luwicky's last meeting for the school committee, so we want to thank her for her service on school committee over the past three years. Libby's kindness, curiosity, and insight have been a huge asset to the committee and the town of Hingham. And I also want to acknowledge the incredible amount of time she and work that she contributed as we drafted the policy manual, which we will hopefully vote on tonight. So we will miss Libby, and we wish her all, all the luck in her future endeavors. So with all of that.
Thank you, Libby.
So with all of that, item two is, oh, sorry, item three is, we, we're just in executive session, and we are going to review proposed revisions to contract terms for administrators and act as appropriate. Dr. Austin, did you want to?
No, actually, this is out of executive session, so just looking for the motion that came out of executive session.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow the principal and central office administrators to roll over their unused vacation days in perpetuity.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Michelle Eyre?
I'm an aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Libby Luwicky?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye, and I'd just like to add, I want to thank all of the administrators and principals for all you've done this year. It has been one for the real record books, and I know I saw Rick Swanson running Saturday night to the play after everyone else was leaving town meeting, so that's just one example of some of the fires everybody's been putting out. So thank you, and I hope you can use your vacation time, as you strongly deserve it.
So. And I second all of that, and I'm an aye as well. So the motion carries. 4.1 is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 26, 2021.
Move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 26, 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Aye as well. Item 4.2, minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 4th, 2021. Actually, this one we don't have to do, this is the policy subcommittee. 4.2 is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 8th, 2021. Wait.
Move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 8th, 2021.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, item five is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed in the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. State when you're called on, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Mass. General Law, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all that being said, if anyone would like to make a comment, could you just use the raise hand function in the participants list? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Austin?
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you, Jerry Versini. Before I ask Cherry to pull up the brief slide presentation, I want to make a statement if I could, so before I start the evening, I want to make just a few moments to make a brief statement of appreciation. Without question, the pandemic of the past 15 months has had a profound impact on our student staff and the HPS community as a whole. The challenges we all faced have been hard, and all the road has been difficult, we have persevered, and we will finish the school year strong. This evening, I would like to personally thank the staff, students, parents, members of the supporters of Hingham Public Schools, town officials, and the entire Hingham community for attending the town meeting this past Saturday and in a unanimous vote approving our proposed fiscal year '22 district operating budget. Your support of the district is unparalleled and very much appreciated. While we still have a lot of work to do to finish the year and to be ready for the fall of '21, I hope we can all take just a minute to celebrate the special moment. Because of your support, I know that there are brighter days ahead for our students, staff, and for our community. I look forward to working with all of you to make 2021, 2022 a great year. Thank you. Cherry, with that, would you please? Thank you. As customary, give a presentation on the COVID conditions of the district, as well as another update. So in regards to the numbers of the town of Hingham, we see now to the far right, where we dropped down from 21.4 cases per 100,000, down to 12.8, so almost a half. We are heading to the green. Once we get below 10, I believe that'll make the green for the town of Hingham, so I would not be surprised to see this week for the town to turn green, which is very good news and very consistent with the rest of the Commonwealth, and its drop in cases. As far as testing goes in the town of Hingham, way again to the far right, 1.52% positivity, which is the lowest head has been since November of '20. So very much heading in the right direction. Appreciate everybody's hard work, and more importantly, I think it shows that we did not have the spike after the April vacation that people had anticipated, so incredibly good news for that. And I would also take this opportunity to thank all the people who voluntarily participate in testing the students and keeping a handle on this entire situation, so thank you. So again, in our, our schools, last week we had an additional six cases, moving from 292 total cases to 298. That was one staff member and five students, and so, once again, moving down with six total cases, one of the lower incident rates that we've had in quite a while. Again, now, what's really good news, as we changed the quarantine rules, so many people would recognize that even though we do get cases in school, and we still do, and some people may have been contacted and let them know that they're a close contact, so the identification of a close contact is still the CDC definition of within six feet for at least 15 minutes for a period of 24 hours. However, what's, quarantine now has changed with DESI regulations, is that now for quarantine, you'd have to be within three feet of a student for 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. So as you can see, in April, we had very, very high numbers of quarantine. We are now down to very, very small numbers of quarantine, and students are staying in school, and that's very positive. So now we look at our COVID-19 staff testing, which we've been doing since the 14th of January, and this past week on 5/6, we tested another 61 individuals. We did have one positive for a positive test rate of 1.6%, but overall, out of 2,046 staff tests that we have provided, we've only had three positive for a 0.10% test positive rate. And for students, we now look at the four, five, I mean, the 5.4 and 5.5 on the next-to-bottom line, where this last week we ran 91 pools of students for 547 students that are involved in that test. We had 100% negative test pools, which is incredibly good news for us. So overall, at this point, we've run 496 pools, student pools for testing, which included 3,178 individual tests for a negative pool rate of 99.4%. We did, we did have three positive pools, which is a 0.6% positivity rate, and then we've administered 27 Binax Now, Abbott Binax Now Rapid Tests as a result of the positive test, and one individual has come back as positive. So that is really good news for us and, and really proof that this is working well. So finally, we look again here at the total weekly positive case. Again, this past week on the far right is six, which is down from nine from the previous week. The two the week prior to that, again, is a little bit, obviously, I, I'm not taking that as a full number because that was the week of vacation, so the good news is we're down to six, which is some of the lowest things that we've seen, or numbers we've seen since November. And then the weekly positive case, kind of the staff, this week we're up to one, but over the last few weeks, in the last three weeks, we've had one case in the past three weeks total. So the in-person learning update, just on the second part of my discussion tonight, I want to give an update on where we're at with that. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we were, we were expecting the commissioner to rule on if students at high school were going to be required to come back to full time, although the commissioner did rule that just recently, and he, and he ruled to end the hybrid learning model for all high school students effective no later than May 17th, which is next Monday, 2021. So that is, as of May 17, all students in elementary, middle, and high school will attend school full-time for Hingham Public Schools and across the Commonwealth unless you have a waiver, which we are not applying for. As of May 17, the high school students will no longer be permitted to access any of their classes, including the direct study remotely, so they must be in school. Parents were informed by an email today from Principal Swanson explaining the change to the high school schedule that will begin on May 17. But the highlights of that is on May 17, all blocks will be expanded to 90 minutes each, a 15-minute snack break has been added between blocks two and three, the high school will remain in a four-block schedule for the remainder of the school year with lunch and directed study, as well as other classes would be occurring in block four. So if a student has a, a different class in block four, they would attend that, or they'd attend their block, directed study, as well as do lunch. So a lot of questions have been asked about directed study. I want to put in the DESI definition of directed study, and that is, a directed study requires students to be engaged in activities directly related to their program of studies, and a teacher must be available to assist students. A directed study may occur in places such as the classroom, computer lab, or resource room. Traditional, such as the non-directed, studies are not considered directed study. So all of our studies are considered directed study from this point forward out to the rest of the year. On May 17, block four will consist of a 55-minute directed study or class block and a 35-minute lunch break. All students will either be assigned to their class or directed study with access to a licensed teacher. Again, that's the main difference between a directed study and a non-directed study, that they have to have direct access to a teacher for their questions. So all students are assigned, given assignments by teachers in group classroom, they should be working on those assignments, and they have direct access to a teacher in their classroom. So beginning May 17, we have full day in-person attendance will be required for all grades nine through 11 students. Seniors will be afforded senior privilege, which has been the custom at HHS in the past years. So that's an increase, the final step in in-person learning update. The very good news is, and I know this has been a very difficult year, there's been a lot of pivoting, there's been many schedule changes that are frustrating for, for both staff and students and parents, but we are fullback, full-time on Monday, 17th, the remainder of the school year. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swanson to provide details about the end-of-the-year activities for Hingham High School, and at the next school committee, the elementary and middle school administrators will provide information about their end-of-the-year activities at their respective schools.
Before we move on to that, though, I just want to mention the vaccination. As of now, students who are 16 years and older can, are eligible for the Pfizer vaccination, and I just encourage everyone to do it, and I just saw recently they're expecting to approve 12- to 15-year-olds very soon, in the next week, so just, that's, that'll help a lot with any kind of quarantine numbers and cases, and help us get back to normal faster. So if, if parents could do that, I would just encourage them to do that.
And actually, Carrie, tonight, about an hour ago, the USFDA did authorize Pfizer vaccine for adolescents as young as 12 years old.
Right, but there's one more committee they have to go through.
Oh, okay.
But it should be, it should happen soon.
Thank you, that's a very good point, Carrie. And what I would say also, I know that a lot of people have asked if the school would run a clinic. We have talked to the health department, and there just isn't any vaccine available in Hingham. If that ever becomes where there is availability for that, we would certainly be very interested in running any clinic to support student vaccination, so as, make that easier for both them and their parents. Thank you. I can take questions on anything that I've said before. Mr. Swanson goes on to his, if anybody has any questions for me.
Does anyone in the committee have any questions? Not seeing any. If anyone who's called in, or is on Zoom, if you have any questions, if you could just use the raise hand function under the participants, participants list. I see Mark Ludley, if you could just say your name and address before you start?
Hi, Mark Ludley, 810 away. Hi there. Dr. Austin, you said that, it was just earlier this week that we learned about the approval for the full day. Is that also the timing when we learned about the fact that we needed to stretch the high school from 83 minutes to 90 minutes?
The, the approval from the commissioner happened the week after, about a week or so ago, actually, and so we've been looking at a schedule since that point, and so we've been working those details out, and then wanted to get that information out to parents as soon as possible today.
All right, very good, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Heather Hill?
Hello, I'm Heather Hill, 203 Lizelle. My son has the third lunch in, in high school, and, which doesn't start till 2:06 PM. You know, as any teenage boy, that could be very difficult, I'm sure you all can, can relate, but I'm wondering, do they have to, does he have to stay for lunch, or could he leave at 2:06? How does that work?
I'll ask Mr. Swanson if he's got that at this time, if he can be dismissed for lunch.
Sure. Good question. I would say, first of all, the, the current lunch assignments could potentially change because lunch right now is coming out of the third period. In fact, lunch assignments are very likely to change for most students because lunch currently, as of last Monday, when we instituted our last schedule change, and I, our apologies, obviously, for the, the stream of schedule changes, it's, it's not ideal to just two weeks after our last schedule change have to change again, but I think the last week and a half has gone well with our first lunches in school. The lunch assignments, I guess, will change because currently, while lunch is coming from the third period, lunch as of next Monday will occur during the fourth period, so lunch assignments will have to be reworked at the high school. So he may or may not have the third lunch as of next Monday. If he does, he would be free to leave if he chooses to do so, because we won't be taking attendance at lunch. So I, I would expect that most likely engagement in third lunch will be smaller than first and third, we're, we're seeing that now. The third lunch has fewer students in it, we, again, we're not taking attendance there. So I, I would add, and, you know, also in addressing the point about how it would be difficult to wait until that late in the day to have your lunch, we, we recognize that it really was not the ideal time for lunch. In a normal school year, we start lunch at 11 o'clock, and the, the three lunch waves run between 11:00 and 12:30. Over the last four weeks of this current school year, lunch will be starting later than it ever has, but we'll also be implementing our first-ever substantial snack break of 15 minutes after the second period. So we expect that students will be able to, to enjoy a substantial snack at that point. They may also be able to snack during the other mask breaks because we're allowing eight minutes of passing time in between periods, so an opportunity there to have a snack, and then the longer break after the second period, so. It's a lot of change. We, we think it's workable and, and is the best of the available options to us at this point.
Thank you. Julie, state your name and address.
Hi, Julie Donovan, 6 Blue Sky Drive. Thanks for taking my question. 90 minutes seems awfully long for both the students and the teachers. I mean, even in a college setting, the classes are 45 minutes to 60 minutes. I recognize the challenge in the calendar schedule, but this has been a challenging year across the board. Why is the high school, I can't comment on any other school setting, not going back to the traditional class schedule that you would see pre-COVID? 90 minutes in a class seems just not productive.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a stab at that real quickly. We, we understand that, there's no question about that, and it, I would also say, it's not uncommon to see anywhere from 85 to 90 minutes in a block schedule, fairly common. I talked to some of my colleagues across the South Shore, and running also four-block schedules, and we have to have, bottom line is, enough minutes in there to make five-and-a-half hours of structured learning time each day. The other thing I would also say is that we heard from parents, a number of parents too, that were very concerned about the length of a directed study block being 83 minutes, and so when this was designed to, to go back and maximize the instructional time that students have lost over time and to maximize it for the rest of the year. And, and so that's where that, we get it's not ideal. We will certainly be reverting back to our normal schedule next year. That is the plan, that's what we will implement, and that's what we are preparing for, and so we, we understand it's not ideal, but again, given the circumstances, everybody really believed this was the best-case scenario for us students managing the school.
Great, thank you. Allison Douglas?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh, thanks, Carrie. Okay, Allison Douglas, 9 Isaac Sprague Drive, and I appreciate, my question's directed to the concept of the directed study, and I appreciate seeing the definition here in the slides tonight, because I actually had not seen that before, but I'm a little confused because as the study has been described to me, and I have a freshman, it, it really does seem like a traditional study hall where there is an adult who is a teacher present and chaperoning, but if what we're, you know, sort of keying this on is direct access to a teacher, the structure, as I understood it, was that this was a multi-age classroom, so you could have my freshman in with junior, senior sophomores, there will be a teacher present, not necessarily a teacher that teaches any of his subjects, to whom he could direct a question. So I, I'm confused as to how that is anything but a traditional study hall, and my confusion was even more acute when I saw the email today, which referred to what I understood to be sort of the opt-out from the prior weeks. My son stayed home, I just had him come home for this study hall period, and it's being referred to as what was a directed study alternate location, I believe, but he was not participating in any directed studying, he was at home doing his homework. So, you know, it feels to me like we've created these, you know, we're using defined terms that I understand the regulations permit, but I'm not seeing it structured as anything other than a monitored study hall. And I'd just like some further explanation around that.
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Swanson on that.
I think the bottom line in meeting the regulation is access to a licensed teacher, which has been the case all along, including for those students like your son who opted for a directed study alternate site. He may be at home, working on his homework, and choosing not to access the teacher that's available to him during that time, and, and that truly has been the case for most students who are in the directed study alternate site, but the, the school has made But the the school has made available to them a teacher with whom they could engage and ask questions, and that will remain the case. But with a classroom location available for all students without the same opt-out to choose to do it at an alternate site as as they have done so far. And I do appreciate that to some extent it feels like semantics, and we hear people saying, well, this feels like it looks and feels like a study hall. But it is meeting the definition of an opportunity to engage with a licensed teacher in the event that that you have questions. And I and I think that's what most students really want and need during that time is the opportunity to work on the assignments that have been given to them by their teachers so that they can engage in the rigorous work that's part of our academic program. And if they have the opportunity to engage with a teacher during that time, that's our obligation to them and one that we're determined to fulfill.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi, Linda Sharkansky, 32 Hancock Road, Hingham. So I just want to add to that, that, I mean, we're talking about regulations and meeting the regulations and that there's a teacher available. But I want to circle this back to the students. Are we meeting the needs of the students? And I would wholeheartedly say that we're not. 90 minutes is, I agree with Julie, it's too long to stay focused for both the teacher and the student. And again, I think we're focusing on what the teachers need and the regulatory bodies need, but not what the students need. It I I I think it's a huge letdown. There's nothing more I can say. It is what it is, but it certainly doesn't meet the needs of my children. 90 minutes is too long. I'd rather have time spent with an educator educating my children, not someone who has access to help them with homework. They need education for all the deficits of the past 15 months. So I don't know who, I mean, Mr. Swanson said, we all agree that this was, you know, the right thing to do right now. And I know that it's complex, but I think we, I wish we had gone back to a more traditional model that would have been better suited for the children, for the students' needs. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will say to that, we we heard pretty much unanimously from parents, and this isn't a school committee decision. This is something the administration figured out with the schedule. But we did hear, all of us heard pretty unanimously from parents and from students at the student forums that they didn't want their schedules changed at this point of the year. And I know there has been some change, but it would have been a complete upheaval. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Kirsten Moore?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, hi Kirsten.
Hi, Kirsten Moore, 120 South Pleasant Street. My concern is to follow up with that. A licensed teacher, it doesn't matter if they even are teaching the same subject. So I could have a French teacher in there, which is a subject my daughter doesn't even take. What questions is my daughter realistically going to be able to ask in any subject that she is taking that this teacher is going to help her with? I think that meeting regulations is not where we are at. I look for education to be inspirational and moving and something for my child to be aspiring to. Meeting a regulation is survival. I I don't look at that as this, and if we're touting our schools as so wonderful, I don't understand how this marks any such subject. My also concern is 90 minutes is too long. There are children out there who cannot sustain this, and yes, they're going to survive it, but there are going to be repercussions because of what we are holding them to. This is beyond what they are used to. This is beyond, I mean, this year will end, thankfully sooner rather than later. But the question is, what's going to be happening because of it? And this is not moving in a direction that I am hoping that we're moving to. Lastly, lunch at 2 o'clock. Children need some primary things, a good night's sleep, and food. How is a child supposed to stay alert and open to learning for 90 minutes if they haven't eaten for six hours? Not all children in the school can make it in and out of that school in the one-way loops in a 15 minutes of time, eat something, get back to the classroom. It's just not going to happen, and it hasn't happened. So I don't understand. And lastly, if we are holding kids to start sports at 3 o'clock and education is much more important than sports, how on earth are we going to get a kid onto a field and expect them to do long-distance runs, sprints, play lacrosse, whatever it is the child does, without some kid literally vomiting across a field if they're eating at 2 o'clock? I I don't understand how this works and how this was the best interest. Very disappointing. Thank you.
I thank you for that feedback. Monica Matthews?
Hi, this is Monica Matthews, 102 Hershey Street. So I also, you know, I have two freshmen, and they had, well, one of them had opted to take the study at home because of it's easier for her to work at home. Now she says she's in the auditorium. I'm wondering how many kids are in the auditorium for 90 minutes a day? And there's no even a desktop to sit at. Like, what are the accommodations in the auditorium where she's going to be sitting for 90 minutes a day?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to take that real quick, and I think, Mr. Swanson, you can follow up on this. You know, at the initial, I don't believe, I'm not sure if there'll be any students in the auditorium or not. The idea of of scheduling this to the last period was to make sure we had enough coverage for all students in smaller classrooms. And so the intent would be to to place students in classrooms. That's still the intent, Mr. Swanson.
To the extent possible, yes. I I can't promise that we won't be using the auditorium during that period. But we're certainly going to try to minimize it to the extent possible.
Thank you. All right, so next is the end of year activities.
I'm just going to turn that over to Mr. Swanson to talk a little bit about the end of the year activities at the high school. And then next meeting, we'll do the elementary and middle.
Okay, sure. And before I do that, I I just want to, you know, address the the general, I think, tone of disappointment that some have expressed and the need for an additional schedule change. And, you know, while reminding people that we are at that point down to only 21 days left in the school year. And by by one way of calculating what's a normal day of of school, we we might say we have five normal days of school left at that point that are not interrupted by either MCAS. You know, we have nine days of MCAS after May 15th or AP exams or other significant events that'll be disrupting the the school year. It's been a year of tremendous chaos and and change for us. And from the very beginning, I feel like we've been confronted with really difficult regulations and ever-changing regulations. And and while none of us would really argue that the solution we've arrived at is perfect or will address all of our hopes and and needs for ending the school year in a strong way, I still do feel an abiding sense of hope in our capacity to finish the school year in in the best way possible under these extremely difficult conditions. And it's not a schedule that any of us, any of us would have really chosen in a in a normal year, even though, you know, there there are schools that continue to use a block schedule to this time. And for me, even in my own teaching career, I taught with 86-minute periods for 12 years, actually as a history teacher at other schools in eastern Massachusetts. That model has sort of gone out of vogue in the last decade or so, but it was widely used for a long time. There are merits to it, so I don't at all want to suggest that our last four weeks of the school year would be lost or that we're we're forfeiting an opportunity for powerful learning to still happen. It's not ideal, but I think, given the conditions that we've got to contend with, it's it's the best option available to us at this time. And and we spent an awful lot of time trying trying to address the pros and cons. Every model we looked at had significant cons. This one does as well. But of all the the options we looked at, it was the least objectionable. We achieved a consensus among our our high school leadership team, including our assistant principals, all of our department directors and myself. And I think it's something that we we could take pride in at least saying that we we've landed at this point, given the the constraints with a model that will help us to finish in a in a good way. And and I hope people will remain positive. It it is the model we're going with at this point, and we need to make the best of it. So I hope people will extend that goodwill and help us to end the year in the best possible way. While we do that, I'll turn over now to to the end of the year events. As I mentioned, the timeline is is pretty brief. We're down, as of this moment, we're down to 25 days of school. And when we change the schedule on on May 17th, we'll be at at 21 days of school at that point. It will contain lots of change. It will contend as a or contain, as I mentioned before, lots of standardized testing. But it's going to include lots of fun things as well. And I'll highlight just a few of the end of the year events for our seniors and also promise to to seniors and to parents of seniors a communication in the next couple of days that includes all of this in writing. And I appreciate the patience that people have extended so far as we look at ever-changing guidelines around these end-of-year events too. For example, it was only a little over a week ago that the the DESI regulations that pertain to graduation were changed again. So we were on the cusp of putting out all of our graduation expectations, and we thought that it was probably going to look very much like it did last year, which we think was a successful event. We held it very late on August 1st, but we did have the chance for all of our graduates to have two guests with them. And we thought it would probably be a very similar model. But now with with newly loosening guidelines, we're expecting more guests to be able to attend the graduation. It means a little more work for us in planning because it's it's not going to exactly be plug-in what we did last year. It is probably going to include our graduates sitting on the bleachers because now that seniors can sit, according to the new guidance, at just three feet of social distance, we can fit our entire graduating class on the bleachers, which will enable us to put pods of guests on the field. Those individual pods have to be separated by six feet. But we're determining now with the inclusion of our band, which will be playing in person again this year for the first time in two years at graduation, whether we can allow our graduates as many as six guests. That's the hope because that's the maximum allowable under the current regulation. But we need to determine if we can actually fit physically six guests per person. It might end up being four. We should have the answer for that in the next couple of days, and we'll be putting out all the details that pertain to graduation, to ticketing and registration in the very near future. But before we get to graduation, which really is the peak event and the highlight event on June 5th, and the interim, we will be looking at the kickoff this Saturday with the Senior Car Parade, the second-ever Senior Car Parade. This is a a new tradition that was inaugurated last year for the first time. It will be held this Saturday morning, May 15th, starting at the middle school at 8:30 in the morning. And the route will go down Main Street, turn onto Free Street, and then end coming past the high school. That promises to be a really fun and memorable event this year, just as it was last year. And then we go ahead 12 days after that, seniors' last day of classes at Hingham High School. Our last regular day of school is Thursday, May 27th. The day, that's also the day that we expect to launch the memory walk, which is sort of analogous to what an event that used to happen on senior night after graduation inside the school. But in keeping with current safety protocols, that's something that we're going to move outdoors again this year, just as we did last year. That's likely to begin on May 27th as well. And and then the next day, an event where caps and gowns will be distributed late in the morning from our far parking lot. We're going to have the Hornster's ice cream truck there that day as well. This is an event that was planned by the senior class leaders, the class officers and advisors to gather an event they're very excited about as well. We understand the disappointment and the the cancellation of the traditional field day activity that in past years has happened at our town hall, but which was not possible for us this year, according to safety protocol. So the the field day unfortunately will not happen, but it's replaced by an alternate event on May 28th, which is a Friday. Then the next week, which is the the week leading up to graduation, an awards night will be happening on June 1st. That event is going to be held outdoors again, and it's in keeping with the safety protocols. That event typically happens in our, we can't fit the senior class inside the auditorium at social distancing, much less any guests. So in order to welcome some guests, that event will be hap- be happening outdoors on Tuesday evening, June 1st. We're going to combine what previously had been two separate events, senior athletic awards and the regular senior awards into a single event between 6:00 and 8:00 PM on that night. And then two days later, on the night that would have been prom night, traditionally, the senior prom is held on the Thursday before graduation. This year, again, it's in keeping with very clear guidelines from the Department of Education that they were strongly discouraging schools from holding proms. And while I understand that there are, there are a few other schools I know of in the in the area that that have contradicted those regulations and gone forward with the prom. In most cases, they're they're much smaller schools. But we're honoring the DESI regulations. Sadly, Hingham High School will not have a senior prom this year, but there's an alternative event. Again, it's planned by class advisors together with the class officer. So it's it's student-led, as is always the case with the prom. The the proms are never events that are planned by school administrators. They're they're always student-driven. And this year, again, that that event, it's called Celebration Under the Lights. It'll be happening on June 3rd between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. Details to come in the next few days on that. The officers, together with their advisors, have been hard at work on the details, which will be happening on our campus. And then finally, graduation on June 5th, which leaves us with just less than two weeks till the end of the school year. At that point, during that time, we we will have a junior award ceremony and and our Andrew Wehopte Catching Kindness Award, which is always a highlight at the end of the year as well. So alongside all the change and and some degree of stress and strain here, we've got a lot to look forward to in moments that I'm sure are going to be a lot of fun in these next few weeks.
Thank you. It sounds like a busy couple of few weeks. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Not seeing any. I see two hands so far. So Julie?
Hey, Brick. What about a plan for the juniors? It's a tradition at Hingham to have a junior prom. And there are other towns doing proms. And listen, you don't even have to use the word prom. But why not get a tent and bring the junior class together? Again, don't call it a prom and freak people out. Just make it a junior something, something, something. And give these kids something at the end of the year. I mean, that that junior prom is a Hingham tradition.
Well, you're right. There's no question junior prom is is a tradition. I I I would say, you know, we're we're won't, we're just not looking at proms at this point before the end of the year. Each of the classes has looked at some social events that could be held in accordance with safety protocols, and I'm certainly open to that. Those those events have always been, and I think really need to be student-driven and and emerge from student leadership. And I'm open to proposals that come from our students, together with their advisors, to find ways to keep school spirit alive and and really try to bolster the the spirit of fun that that we hope will pervade these last few weeks of school. I I also am aware of some other schools that have postponed junior proms until the fall of next year. And that's something that I think we could be open to as well.
Okay, thank you. Sean Galvin?
Sean Galvin here at 143 Ford Hill Street in Hingham. We got a couple of questions regarding the senior celebration under the lights on June 3rd. What kind of activities are going to be offered? Will there be a red carpet? Will it be a formal, where type of model? Will there be any food trucks or concessions? And then the next part is graduation, June 5th, 5:00 PM. If it should rain, will they move them indoors and have two guests per graduate instead of four to six? Or will that be a rain date?
Sure. So thank you for those questions, Sean. First of all, with regard to the celebration of the lights on June 3rd, I don't want to spoil the surprise for the class officers who have been working on that. And and some of the details are actually still in the works. So I would just ask you and anyone else who's wondering about that to stay tuned. I I think within the next couple of days, we should have a communication that comes out to everybody with details. And it will include reference to things like whether whether there would be a red carpet. There certainly would be a photographer, I I can assure that. And and as for the details of the dress, I think there's still some discussion around that and the entertainment that would be included. And and then secondly, to your question about a rain date, we would be looking at a rain date of Sunday, June 6th for graduation. Because this year, unfortunately, we just don't have the option of moving the event indoors. In a regular year, we would move the graduation into the gym in the event of inclement weather. But this year, we would simply not be able to honor social distancing protocols, even for the graduates, much less any guests, if we moved it indoors. So we'd be looking at a rain date of Sunday morning with the option to potentially move it later into the day on Sunday as well if we needed to. But we will hope and pray for good weather on June 5th. I think we can all agree that we're due for some good luck over these last few weeks. Over these last few weeks of the school year, so let's hope for a bright sunny day on June 5th.
Great, thank you, and thank you so much for the update. Next we have communications, item seven, we don't have commu, student communications tonight because Carly had a conflict, uh, Dr. Austin, do you have anything?
I do not have any communications, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the committee have any communications? Okay, seeing none, we're going on to eight unfinished business. Uh, eight point one is to consider proposed policy manual section K, which is community relations and act as appropriate. Um, so anyone who's been on these calls knows that um, over the past year, we've been reviewing our policy manual to make sure that we have all the legally required policies. As well as those that reflect best practices and our priorities as a district. So this is our section read, the second read of section K. And as with all the other sections we reviewed this year, the policy subcommittee reviewed the Massachusetts Association of School Committee or M A S C templates for these sections along with Hingham policies. Where we have them, um, Dr. Austin participated in our discussions and the, the relevant policies were shared with the appropriate administrator staff and the H E A for input. Um, so section K recognizes that the Hingham Public Schools contribute to the community's success and in turn benefits from the community's resources, as we saw on Saturday. Um, so it contains policies to define, uh, to find and strengthen that relationship. This section outlines parameters around school, community and parent relationships, relationships with parent organizations, media relations. Policy around the use of school property facilities and the relationship between the district and the police department among other policies, so. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments on section K? Okay, seeing none, um, I would accept a motion to approve proposed section K in form.
I'll make a motion to approve policy manual section K, community relations in form as presented to the committee.
I will second, thank you both, um, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness? Carlys?
Aye.
Lib?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Um, eight point two is to consider the Hingham Public Schools policy manual sections that are in the packet, which is, which all of now have been approved in form and act as appropriate. So these are all the sections we've already approved in, in form, um, the motion we are looking for here is um. To adopt the revised policy manual as previously approved in form and rescind all previous versions of the H, Hingham Public Schools policy manual. So I'd like someone like to make that motion.
Libby, you want to do it?
I do, I don't have the language in front of me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the new policy manual and rescind the old one.
The revised policy manual as previously.
To approve the revised policy manual and rescind the.
Previous version.
The, the previous version.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Liza, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlys? Carlys, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
No, we can't.
Aye.
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 And I'm an I as well, and I just want to thank Libby and Liza, very, that was, that was so. The next step is we will send this to Jim Hardy with M A S C and they will put it in, will, will give us some hard copies. They will give us some, some on flash drives and then plans to go ahead and put it on, on the. On website too, then it'll all be searchable, so hopefully useful for families and for staff. So um, that's eight point two, uh, eight point three is to appoint a member to the reopening committee, Dr. Austin, do you want to talk about this committee at all?
Thank you very much, uh, this is the committee that we talked about last week, um, or the last meeting. Um, it would be charge nations about potential scenarios, uh, and the reopening of schools in 2021. And although we do anticipate a full regular opening of our schools, uh, the charge of this committee will be to look at what if, uh, scenarios, so. Um, we did ask for um, a member of the school committee to be part of that, uh, we are meeting, our first meeting will be on the 12th of this week, uh, this week. We have made, the second meeting on May 19th, uh, and then we'll, we'll schedule dates after that and I'll make a report back to the committee, uh, the next meeting. So yeah, we're looking for an appointment, uh, by you, uh, from chair.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you to everyone who volunteered to help with this, um, so I'm going to appoint Jen Benham to the reopening committee and thank you for. Working on this and taking on this extra task over the summer, so. Um, number nine is new business, so nine point one is the Hingham Middle School Council Report.
Thank you, and uh, I'll just turn it over real quickly, um, to Derek Smith to give that report, believe he probably has a, a brief slideshow for all of you, uh, to move.
Thank you, Dr. Austin, yes I do, uh, although I didn't like hearing the, uh, what if statement just a minute or so ago, I, I'm hoping that we can go forward full steam ahead next year, but. Uh, but I'm sure that we're prepared for, um, whatever comes our way. So I do have a few slides to share with you, this is a, a, a different, um, approach to our school council report, you know, typically. We review the progress on previous goals and talk about our, our new goals, um. With the fact that with the interruption to our, our business last year, um, I have some updates for our previous goals and some proposed goals. Our school council does have a, a meeting scheduled to finalize those goals, we were, uh, again unexpectedly interrupted recently. Uh, Liza can attest to the fact that we had a medical emergency with a student that, that, um, took our last meeting off the, off the rails and we weren't able to, um. Finalize our, our goals and action steps, but I do have some, some exciting information to share with you, so, just going to quickly share my screen. So I, I do, I do want to start by thanking, uh, the, the committee and, uh, and central office and Dr. Austin for all the work they've done and the support they've given us this year. Because when we consider that a year ago, this is what Hingham Middle School looked like, this is the cafeteria, the gymnasium rather. And those are the contents of a thousand lockers labeled with students' names, um, you know, we, we, uh, quickly had to, uh, shift the way we're doing things. Um, this is what we, where we were roughly a year ago. And here we are today, back in business, uh, it's great to see kids back in school, uh, fully participating in the, uh, the, the robust, um. Activities that we have available to them, here's Mr. Sinkata with our, our seventh, eighth grade band students. And in our outdoor band facility, uh, it's been great for the past few weeks having this as a, 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 an area where the kids can get back to normal, if you will. So it is great to be back. So, uh, just to review our previous goals and the progress on them, one of the first goals that we had, um, pri, prior to the shutdown. We were, we were working on developing and implementing curriculum and programs to meet the new Massachusetts civic standards for grade A, we will, uh, consider that, that complete. I know that a number of you were involved in, um, uh, working with our students on that, we really appreciate you, um, giving your time and energy. It's been a very exciting, uh, program that the students have been involved in. Um, they have identified various, uh, areas of improvement for not only our, our school, but our town. Um, some of the things that we have looked at, um, students are looking to improve the traffic flow at H M S during dismissal, they conducted a study, uh, recently of. Of how quickly we get our, our, our school buses and our walkers and our bike riders and our parents out and. Um, they proposed a, a, a pilot program that we want to try out before the end of this year to see if we can improve that. Another area that students wanted to look at was expanding the use of outdoor educational spaces at Hingham Middle School. Uh, they had some compelling arguments as to why that would be good for our kid, and for our teachers. A appeal to our P T O who has funded the, um, purchase of some, uh, uh, materials that would support some outdoor educational spaces. We're looking forward to see that, um, up and running. Um, and we've also had students looking to support the Hingham Food Pantry and help them, um, with their collection of donations, not only of food, but of funds, so. Um, some really exciting areas where the kids have, um, gotten into the spirit of being active members of the community, not just passive. So we're really impressed with the work that our, our eighth graders have done and we look forward to seeing where some of these projects goes, there, there are several more, but you know, just. To give you an overview of where, where we are. Um, a previous goal was to provide supports to aid the enhancement of inclusion education and cooperative instruction, we consider that. Uh, goal in progress, the interruption to our year last year, um, and even the disjointed, um, approach to. The start of the year where we had hybrid learning and not all of our students together, we don't feel we were able to really gather the data we needed to, um, assess our progress on that. We need to collect some, um, survey, um, feedback from teachers as to how the, um, the, the cooperative instruction is working. And use that to inform our future, um, our future measures in, in that area, so we're going to consider that goal still in progress. Um, we had a goal to develop and implement supports to improve performance of students with disabilities on open response items in the grade eight, uh, science, technology and engineering M C A S standards. Uh, we do consider that goal complete, while we haven't been able to gather the data on that since they did not participate in that, uh, M C A S assessment. Um, our teachers did collaborate, uh, at the secondary level in the science department from, uh, grade six through 12. A number of teachers got together and they, um, looked at how we instruct students to answer open response questions in the area of science. And they came up with, um, some really great tools that we're using at both the middle and high school. And we feel confident that that's going to be very helpful moving forward, I just want to share some examples on that. Um, they, they take the approach of instructing students to work with the, in, in the domains of claim, evidence and reasoning. When looking at an open response question. Um, you know, they are, they've been given this template to help organize their thinking, if you see the words explain, justify, support, defend. You want to use claim, evidence and reasoning, you start with the question, you look for key words, claim and we've taught, we've tied that to, um. You know, um, language used commonly in the E L A area, thesis and topic sentence, then you look for the evidence that's supporting ideas and quote. Um, and reasoning, you know, connect your interpretation and analysis, you, you connect your claim to evidence, you use because. Uh, so there, we're, we're kind of scaffolding, um, the students', um, approach to writing in the domain of science. Teachers were given a scoring rubric to use with their students in, in their classroom exercises, so they're able to practice this with, with, uh, kids on a regular basis. And if you wanted to see this in practice, you know, here's a seventh grade, um, uh, science lab, the students were given a question. Um, they, they, they had a fictitious scenario where somebody, Bill and I, um, received, was, suffered from food poisoning after eating in a restaurant. And they had to use the data that was provided in the, um, in the lab materials and then, you know, um, use the, use the scaffolded. Um, templates so that they could write their response. So we, uh, we are, we've been using that regularly at the middle school and we hope to see some good results, um. When we actually have our students participate in the grade eight, uh, science, technology and engineering M C A S this year. And goal four was to expand and promote opportunities for parent and family engagement involvement at H M S and again, we consider that in progress because, you know, we were abruptly not really able to have. Uh, parents engaged in what was going on at the school in a typical manner, we have had, you know, many coffees and opportunities for people to, um, meet and, and. Provide feedback to the middle school, but I, we feel that we need an, a, a longer, um, window of time in order to see that to its fruition. Our total goal for, uh, come school year, we want to introduce and implement, um, restorative justice practices to Hingham Middle School. The, um, middle school administration along with the rest of this, uh, district administration will be participating in, uh, a training program this summer. To, um, to learn about restorative justice and to understand how that can enhance, um, our practices in the, not just the middle school, but throughout the district. Um, we'll be taking that information and looking at how that will impact our student handbooks and, uh, how we handle student discipline going forward. We want to expand and implement the tier two support programs for students in the areas math and literacy and it will, obviously with the great news about the budget, uh, this past weekend. We know that we'll be able to, um, hire and, and, um, put into place programs. That will support students in these areas based on, um, students who have identified, uh, areas of need, especially after the last year and a half, uh. We want to make sure that we're, we're closing those gaps and we're putting, uh, the supports into place on a regular basis. We'll be looking at how we need to alter the middle school schedule so that these, um, supports don't significantly interfere with the day to day operation of, uh, our school. Or our students' schedules so that they're not being pulled away from other important parts of their day. And we want to bolster the core value of promoting better understanding between diverse people, uh, obviously the district wide equity work is, um, informing this goal. Um, but we want to look at introducing a G S A to the middle school and bringing in programs that will, uh, help educate our students and teachers on. Um, you know, promoting that understanding between, uh, all of our, all members of our school community. And finally, and we want to nurture the social emotional development of all students and provide interventions and foster social and academic success. Um, we, we recognize that we are going to be looking at, um, some significant needs when we come back in September. Um, you know, hopefully, you know, as I said earlier, that we get back to business as usual, but we know that when we do that, there are going to be, um. Students and families who need additional support, so using the, um, strengths and difficulty questionnaire that we've used in the past and working with our school counselors. We hope to be able to identify students who are in need of additional support and provide, um, social skills groups and, uh, access to counseling services. When students need that so that they can, um, they have the best middle school experience possible. All right, I'm going to come out of the chair and, and any questions or comments, I'm happy to take.
Thank you, uh, does anyone on the committee have any questions? Or comments? So I, I, I think these goals are spot on, especially where we're coming out of the, this environment, I guess I have a question on, um. How we're measuring progress on some of these, so, um, for example, goal three, promoting better understanding between diverse people, like how, how are we measuring that?
So I want to work with, with our, our equity committee to see how do we measure that, Carrie, you know, it, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's intangible, but. Um, do we look at, um, student discipline, you know, do we diminish, um, you know, negative interactions between students, um, of, of. With differences, um. I, I, I don't, our committee, our, our, our school council does need to reconvene to look at where we're going with that, so I would, I'd appreciate any guidance, um. From, from the committee or from, from central office as to the best way to measure the effectiveness of what we're doing in something like that, it's not like a test score, right? We, we can't just say kids are, are better at being nice to each other, how do we, how do we do that?
Right. Yeah, no, that's, that's what I was wondering, because. For the goal two, like implementing tier two supports, that's, it will do it, right?
Right, 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 that will happen, um, and we'll, we'll have data from that because we will be performing assessments, that's, that's measurable, we can, we can look at. How our students are performing, the students that we identify that need those supports, we give them the, um, the tier two supports. We look at where they are, when they start and when they finish, and that obviously is something that we can, we can point to and say, yes, we've, we've seen progress. But something, some, tho, those, those social goals are, are, I, I find more difficult to quantify, um, but I, I, I. Must repeat from it because they are very important.
Right. I'm just wondering if there are ways to quantify it, I think it'd be helpful probably if the school council took a look at that and, you know, flesh out what, what do you mean by that, you know?
Absolutely, no, we're absolutely going to do that and, and I'm just, I, I'll be, uh, reaching out to, to my colleagues to see how do they measure that, what? Because we all have a similar, we all have similar goals, we all want to see our stu, uh, improvement in that area, so. What is, what's the yardstick, how do we, how do we see that we've done what we say we're going to do? Just because we put something in place doesn't mean that we've done our job, we need to make sure that it's been effective.
So the. I know, yeah, sorry, thanks Carrie, and just as you were just talking to us through it, at my company, we use the, um, organizational, organizational health index. Surveys every sort of 12 to 18 months where they survey the. where they survey the employees from everywhere, from the mailroom to the C-suite, right? To ask, you know, it's pretty pointed questions about how you're feeling and they're anonymous. So it's a great way to get feedback about the culture and then it sort of drives like, oh, wow. You know, people think their managers aren't listening to them. So we need to get, those managers need to start getting some training and how to listen to themselves. That's the one part.
That's great. Thank you. Organizational health index?
Yes.
All right. I'll see if I can find something that would apply to middle school students.
Yes.
Eric, you can also look at some safety indexes as well as student safeties and how they feel in their school. Those are very important as well. There are a number of social emotional indexes. And I think that the pre and post survey idea with interventions in between probably to make that the most doable and manageable for measuring success. You know, so we measure in advance, provide intervention in the middle of whether it's, you know, assemblies, whatever we're doing. And, and practices and then post to see what we've done has, has made a difference in those kind of indexes.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
Great. Anyone, members of the public have any questions or comments about the, this presentation? If you could raise your hands. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I just want to thank you for taking the time to present this to us tonight. Like I said, I think those are great goals.
And thank you for the feedback and, and it's very helpful. So I look forward to being back here again next year and letting you know how things went.
Okay, nine point two is the Hingham High School Council report.
Again, I'm going to quickly hand this off to Rick Swanson, the principal at Hingham High School. You're on, Mr. Swanson, again.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Austin. And I'm looking for the opportunity to share my screen right now, which I just tried to do. And I don't know if I have the privileges at this moment.
Are you a panelist?
I am a panelist.
You should be able to.
Okay. There we go. Okay, great. Can everybody see that? Okay, good. So Derek Smith is always a hard act to follow. I would do my very best here to deliver an equally strong presentation about the Hingham High School's school improvement goals from the last two years. Obviously, we're, a typical year would be presenting just one year's worth of goals. But since we did not have the opportunity last year to review the, the goals from the previous year, it's a, it's a double bill here. So I'll, I'll start with just a look back at where we were prior to my previous presentation on school improvement goals. We, we, we made some jokes in that presentation about how we had survived the fire. And we thought that was about the biggest challenge our school would, would perhaps ever face. And to that point, it felt like the biggest challenge we had ever faced. Little did we know what was in store for us. Here are photos taken just last week. That's what our cafeteria looks like now. It's set up with desks rather than with tables. And most of our students are choosing to eat outdoors. And on good days, it can look like this, sitting on the grass. And so there, there has been much that has been saved. But we, we have learned something about challenges since the last time I shared school improvement goals with all of you. So we, we'll take a quick look here now at the last year and a half really of school council work. And last year during the 2019, 2020 school year, this was the first of our school improvement goals. And it was to explore the possibility of expanding the freshman advisory program in order to better serve ninth grade students and potentially also serve students in other grades. So the hope was that we would, we would expand on the spirit of what we have been offering to our students for quite a few years now and, and expand that into a program that might better serve the school as a whole. This goal remains still in progress. It's currently the focus of the secondary flex block committee that Derek and I have both been part of throughout this current school year. So we're, we're looking at actually the possibility of implementing a flex block at the entire, through the entire secondary program, both at the middle school and the high school now. And we're very hopeful about what this might accomplish for both schools in the years to come. Our belief at the high school is that our current model, our ninth grade freshman advisory program makes a positive impact on our school. There's a photo from better times. This, this photo goes back about a year and a half to the, to the start of the last school year when people didn't have to wear masks and they could put their arms around their friends. That was our freshman orientation. And it, it has grown in recent years to include a mentoring program that we think has really strengthened. The freshman advisory program is a photograph of an event that happened last winter prior to the shutdown where upper class mentors were engaging with our ninth grade students. And yet we still feel like we'd like to offer something more. This is a look at a faculty workshop from earlier last year where one of our students addressed the faculty. We worked in small groups to look at ways in which an expanded advisory program or flex block could improve our school culture and better serve our students. So we'll go back to this for a second. This, this work will continue again with a flex block committee that will continue to meet throughout the rest of this year. And, and we hope at the end of this year, we'll offer proposals for ways that we might be able to include that in our high school schedules, well as our middle school schedule going forward. Our second school improvement goal last year was to systematically review our high school graduation requirements. We did that over the course of several meetings with our school council last year. Included some surveys of recent graduates that we did as well. I, I think we marked this goal complete because we, we did a pretty thorough analysis of our school's graduation requirements, compared it to the requirements at other schools in the region. And, and ultimately left without any concrete suggestions for change. But, but I would argue that this is something that's always on the table and always eligible for ongoing review and smart for us to continue to take a look at what we're expecting in terms of graduation requirements. Our third goal last year was to bolster the cultural proficiency of Hingham High School students and staff. This goal at the end of last year was marked in progress. It remains an essential part of our vision, is reflected in our first goal for this year. When we get to that, I think you'll see how the spirit of last year's third goal became part of our first and arguably most important goal this year. So I would argue, you know, expanding on that goal that our school has long prioritized a promotion of cultural proficiency through programs like our global citizenship program, which has been in existence now for almost a decade and has become a model for programs at other schools. We're still frequently contacted by schools throughout the region, looking to, to find out more about our program because it's really gained a broad reputation and it's something we can really be proud of. It's also reflected in clubs like the Model UN. This photo here shows the legendary Jim Kirk, who retired at the end of last year. He was our Model UN advisor for many years with a group at the Harvard Model UN. That photograph was, was taken last year. And we see the same spirit in the international service learning trips that have become a hallmark of our school as well. This is a, a shot from a trip to the Dominican Republic a couple of years ago I was lucky enough to be part of. That school improvement goal has also sparked some new professional development. Several examples of this last year and into this year. Here's just one example of our school's ADL advisor collaborating with the Hingham Unity Council. And so it's really been important for us to establish community partnerships beyond just what we're doing at the school as well. This and other examples of professional development that have emerged from that school improvement goal. And last year as, as well, we were, we were looking at trying to expand offerings to, to students. We had two really excellent programs in the works last year. One of them got to happen just before the shutdown. One of them never got to happen because it was scheduled for just after the shutdown. The one on the left is a, a one man play called Thurgood. And, and the man you see there is a phenomenal actor who portrayed the life of Thurgood Marshall, first African American justice on the United States Supreme Court. And he delivered a phenomenal performance to the entire junior class last year. During Black History Month, it was in February of 2020. About six weeks later, we were supposed to see a performance of a play called Mr. Joy. We were going to have been cool for students and then like again for members of our community. We had won a grant to, to bring that to Hingham as part of our affiliation with the MEKO program. Unfortunately, that, that program was canceled because school had, had been shut down by that point. And as, as you can see, actually ironically, there's the date on the fly of March 12th. That was the night that we left school for the last time last year. So things were really turning upside down at that point. But yet the work had been done and it, it reflects a really genuine passion for, for so many of us at the school as it is throughout the community. And that's work that continues and will for a long time to come. Last year, our fourth and final school improvement goal was to strengthen the school's commitment to a practice of environmental stewardship as a core value. Environmental stewardship is listed technically formally as a core value of Hingham High School. And you see it in so many different places, including in our cafeteria. These, these are not Google image photos. Those are actual photos from the Hingham High School cafeteria where Grow Towers produce the lettuce that we use in our salad bar. And let's hope we get to have a salad bar again at some point. We do still offer salads, if not at the, you know, the, the self-serve salad bar any longer. But the Grow Towers are still there, the work in the greenhouse and in so many other ways through student groups. The philosophy of thinking globally, acting locally, we see it. And there, there are students literally getting their hands dirty, rolling up their sleeves to sift compost that we generate on site and have for many years. Cafeteria partnering with us to, to move toward our goal of sustainability. A whole host of student clubs, including the Botany Club that you see in this photograph here, together with our Green Team, our Oceanography Club, our Biology Club, all share that same spirit. We're building on a very strong foundation here. Here's an image from the longstanding tradition of an annual teach-in on environmental issues that's been happening at our school going back to 2008. And also reflected in a series of annual events, including the Green Apple Day of Service. There are some Green Team students working in our garden. That work continued as recently as last week out in the garden, a bunch of students here last Saturday. Slash the trash program, which has, has won reviews and lots of press on the Boston Globe and video press elsewhere. These are some photos from before the shutdown. Obviously, we look forward to returning that tradition next year when we return to a regular school schedule. All of our teams, including famously the boys hockey team, who the team profiled actually when the Boston Globe came down to take a look at this last year. Striving for perfection in, in the waste stream and pulling stuff out of the trash that should have been recycled or composted. On occasion, we have actually achieved perfection. The dance team was the most recent to achieve a day where literally nothing was found in the trash that could have been recycled or composted. That's a really amazing achievement. It reflects the school's emphasis on this as, as a goal. We earned the green ribbon, as you know, five or six years ago, a federal recognition. Green Team members who were pivotal and it's, it's really reflects student-driven efforts here as well. And it's important to us that we not just hang the banner showing that we're a green ribbon school, but that we continue to earn that green ribbon in the years ahead. You'll see that goal resurrected a little bit in the three goals we have for this year. Our school council has met every month since October. It's actually met many more times than that because it has been reconstituted as the school's reopening advisory committee and has been meeting a pretty much a weekly basis for the last, at least two months. And so we've spent a lot of time together. Some of that time has, has been directed toward reopening. But nevertheless, we, we have continued to focus on our, our three school improvement goals for this year. The first of which is to promote a greater sense of safety for all members of the school community. And we had discussion last spring about wanting to, to continue that goal about cultural proficiency. But think about it in a somewhat different lens in terms of looking at whether all members of our community feel safe. And that we should look at in terms of physical safety, but also in terms of emotional safety and the social emotional wellness of, of our students and, and our staff as well and the broader community. So I think we got a big shot of encouragement toward this goal when earlier this year, our school was recognized as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. This was a goal that we had set for ourselves two years ago when we launched our Unified Sports Program. That's a program that brings together regular education students with special needs students to collaborate on athletic teams in the spirit of fun competition and togetherness. And with a really strong emphasis included. And through our unified track program and our unified basketball program especially, which was, well, the track was our first program, has captured that ethos and, and spirit in a very powerful way. That has also been reflected this year in the work of a new student group called the Hingham High School Unity Project. And it's actually not just a student group, although it is primarily students. Right now, we have about forty members, about thirty to thirty-five of them are students. And we have a number of faculty members, paraeducators and a couple of administrators as well who've been part of this. This, this group began meeting on Election Day back in November and used three days that were actually not school days to hold long workshops. We did it on, on Election Day, again on Veterans Day, and then again on Martin Luther King Day, capitalizing on the symbolic value of those three holidays, but also have met before and after school on a number of occasions. This group will be in our auditorium meeting in person for the very first time tomorrow morning at seven twenty. All of our meetings have been on Zoom so far. But this is a group that has worked very hard to advance that first school improvement goal for this year of making all members of our school community feel safe and, and welcome. And this group has established its four pillars as respect, inclusion, safety and equity, which gives us the terrific acronym of RISE UP with UP for Unity Project. And the RISE being respect, inclusion, safety and equity. It has developed an action plan, a pretty lengthy action plan that we'd be happy to share with the school committee at some point in the future if there's an interest or time for it. But it was shared with the faculty at a February faculty meeting and has been the subject of, of really good work by a tremendous group of young people. Again, primarily students and, and from all four grades and pretty equally distributed among grades nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Its first really public event was held on the week before April vacation. It happened to be on Jackie Robinson Day and, and the group, again capitalizing, we like the symbolic value of holidays and the day dedicated to Jackie Robinson. We were hoping for forty-two games of catch out on our school fields after school with Jackie's number being forty-two and of course his civil rights icon. And we paired people up randomly for games of catch with somebody they hadn't met before. So I had a game of catch with a, a ninth grade student who I'd never met. I got a chance to talk with him for fifteen minutes while playing catch and that was replicated across the field. You see one of our Unity Project leaders being interviewed here for the Friday show in the photograph on the left. So that was a really fun event, reflects the good work of that group. Across the school culture, I think you see groups confronting other real issues. Our, our partnership with Jane Doe and the group that went to the State House just last year. Couple of them in a, in a prominent speaking role, something we're really proud of. And, and we just want to make sure that we mean what we say. Here's a photograph of my own office. And in fact, you might be, you could probably see it over my shoulder and you can actually in the, in the screen. But those need to be more than words to us. We need to reflect it in our actions. And it's important that we make this, I think, our, our, our first and again probably most important school improvement goal. We need to prove it through our actions, including through our best buddies who this year demonstrated their, just really impressive influence on the school culture as a whole. In fact, they raised as much money through their polar pledges any other best buddies group in the state of Massachusetts and had as high a participation as you would find anywhere in the, in the state. Both last year, that's a photograph from last year, and then again this year, it just happened last month. We see it in, in Unified Sports. There's our basketball program and our track program. It's reflected in our newest awards program, the Andrew Rohopte Catching Kindness Awards I referenced earlier. That ceremony is coming up again in a few weeks. And it needs to, to remain a crucial part of our school culture. So that's improvement goal number one. Our second of the three goals this year was to expand and improve on the effective use of technology very timely. Little did any of us guess, you know, a little more than a year ago, the classrooms would, would eventually look like this. Not only the masks, but everybody with a laptop in front of them because some classmates were at home engaging live via Zoom. Or that, or that clubs, like there's our Unity Project again on the right. I just happen to have several photos of this group, club meetings happening virtually. But the variety of applications and specific technologies that our teachers would have to become familiar with this year was, was really an enormous undertaking. And so we thought it important to, to place this in a prominent spot among our school. The, the subject of really extensive professional development, a lot of it before the school year started. But also something that we want to continue to look at in terms of what, what are the keepers from this incredibly challenging year and what are the, the aspects of, of growth and ways that we've learned and got better? Are teachers getting better and stronger, more versatile as teachers? And then what do we need as a district to support and enable that going forward? Both in terms of our infrastructure and probably as well in terms of our staffing and ways we can support that professionally. And then finally, this again is a reflection of a goal last year that really didn't get full attention. We felt by the end of the year that we, given school shutting down in March and, and the distraction from the work of our school improvement goals, that we hadn't. from the work of our school improvement goals, that we hadn't given full attention to the goal of continuing environmental stewardship as a core value. So we put it back in there for this year. These are photos from this year, the work of the Botany Club and our Botany classes continuing within the greenhouse, but also wanting to return to this idea of renewable energy on our campus. Don't I wish that I could tell you, these are photographs from taken on our campus that show the walkway between the far parking lot and our school. But someday, maybe we can say that truthfully and it won't just be a dream, but we've had some conversation going back to, well, Carlos and I have talked about this quite a bit and I think I may have to give Carlos credit for originally having the idea when we were talking about where could solar be placed on our campus that would be appealing to people and could, you know, be something that wouldn't be objectionable to our neighbors, something that would look really good and maybe serve a useful purpose in addition to creating renewable energy, but providing shelter on that log and for many of our students, unpopular walk from the far parking lot. We really want to look closely at how we might be able to make that possible and make visible to the community our commitment to sustainability and to environmental justice and to placing a priority on environmental issues in our school and educating students and as well as our broader community and the importance of these issues. So that's a goal and we want to continue working on that. The hands-on work certainly continues here. That's our garden bed in the fall and there's our garden beds last Saturday, as a matter of fact, when a bunch of our students from Unity Project and from the Botany Club came in on a Saturday morning. As I put in a tweet later that day, one of the key ingredients, if you want to have a green ribbon school, is to have students who care enough about the planet that they'll get up early on a Saturday morning and come in to do the actual work, the hard work, not just saying you believe in this, but being willing to work for it. And we certainly have students about whom you can say that. So that's, that's the work that has been on our plate over the last two years. And altogether, if we were to summarize it, it's about moving our school closer to reaching its full potential. And next year, when we return to a normal schedule and we can really focus on the importance of all those goals and getting our school closer to what we all know it can be and believe it can be and making sure that those are the things that continue to animate our work and keep us motivated and moving forward to being the school that we know we can be. And I will stop there. I hope I didn't take too, too long, met the time myself, but there were a lot to talk about. Thank you for listening and be happy to take any questions if you have.
Great, thank you so much. And then just on the solar panels, Carlos has volunteered to be the school committee representative on the town climate action planning committee that was going to start, that was just approved at a town meeting. So we can advocate there for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Michelle?
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. That was a really cool report. And I guess my truly only comment, and it is that during this unpredictable and unprecedented year, it has been easy to think that everything has been COVID-related, right? All the conversations, all the work, but both of these presentations tonight by you and Mr. Smith really just go to show that the school year continued to go on in its normal course in addition to all the challenges that came up from through COVID. So appreciate the reports from both Mr. Smith and Mr. Swanson because I think they really helped. This year was incredibly challenged, incredibly difficult for students and staff and families, but also the schools did continue to run and they did continue to operate and clubs still happened, sports still happened and students did still learn. So thank you for those reports and your staff who made it all happen.
Thank you, Michelle.
Liza?
I echo what Michelle said and I'm happy to hear that you're looking at the good things that we learned and how do we keep going with them with the technology? Because all of us in all of our lives learned some good things out of all of this, we hope to keep going. One other thing you mentioned about the goal of the graduation requirement review from last year. And if you would consider with your school council, thinking about maybe re-looking at those graduation requirements because of some students this year didn't get to take courses because of the restrictions we had on a number of classes and how that might impact meeting those graduation requirements? And if we considered waivers of maybe certain electives or looking at the future of, you know, how do we meet those requirements? Not penalize kids that something that was out of their control, then maybe have a little leeway with that. Just it's a small thing to consider, but we've heard from some people in the community that we're concerned about students having to pack their schedules the next several years, but maybe there's something we could do to help them with that. So that'd be great.
Fair point. Thank you for that feedback and suggestion.
Anyone else? I just wanted to remark that similar to Derek's presentation, I think the goals are great and they're timely for everything that we've gone through. And I guess especially with the first one, to promote a greater sense of safety for all members of the school community. I was just wondering if the school council could maybe flesh that out a little bit and talk about how we're going to measure it. It seems like something that different people would interpret different ways. And you explained pretty well what you were thinking with that, but it's like, what can we do in a year to point back and say this is all that we did over the past year to meet that goal? And I personally, I'd love to hear the Hingham High School Unity Council's action plan. I think at some point, I think that would be great to see what they're thinking. I would appreciate that.
Thank you. If you've got a spot on a future agenda, I have no doubt that the students on our Unity Project would really welcome the chance to share their work with the school committee and with the broader community. We invited, you know, presenting the action plan to our faculty, we thought it would be more impactful for our teachers to hear about it from their own students. And so rather than, you know, my co-chair, Laura Malerby, who's a phenomenal Spanish teacher, rather than Laura and I sharing the action plan ourselves, although we gave a few brief remarks about the genesis of the program, we turned it right over to sophomore and a senior, Jack Lee, who's in grade ten, and Bria Parker, who's in grade twelve, together with a first-year paraeducator, Molly Rubenovitz, who was a member of our Hingham High School class of 2016. She was one of the recent grads who helped to rescue us this year when we were desperately short of paraeducators and we put out a call for help for those who had just graduated from college. Molly was one of several who returned to Hingham High, along with actually one of her classmates, Matt Dwyer, who's been a real contributor to our Unity Project as well. So it's been a really interesting cross-section of current students from all four grades, several very recent graduates who now work with us and teachers from a number of different departments. But honestly, the real energy and power of this group has come from those who are currently students and their presentation to our teachers was excellent. I'm sure they'd love the opportunity to visit with school committee at some point in the future as well.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, does any, do any members of the public have any questions or comments on the high school? I'm not seeing any, so I just want to thank both of you, Rick and Derek, for your presentations tonight. They're exciting. And to Michelle's point, there's been a lot of work going on in schools in addition to COVID, so we appreciate that. Nine point three is to hold a public hearing to consider a resolution withdrawing from the participation in the state's school choice program for 2020, 2021. Dr. Austin, do you have a recommendation on this one?
Yeah, first, this is definitely here on the side of YouTube. Obviously, consider this question tonight of whether or not we would either participate or draw from the participation in the state school choice program. It is my recommendation that we, and we have not traditionally participated, that we continue that and not participate in the program, but I believe you have to open it up for any questions from anyone and have a discussion.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments on this one? Okay, anyone in the community have any comments or questions on the school choice program? I'm not seeing any hands, so I will accept a motion to withdraw from participating in the state school choice program for 2020, 2021.
I'm with the Hingham Public Schools to not participate in the state school choice program for 2021, 2022 school year.
Yes, thank you for catching that, Carlos. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle?
I.
Jen? Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
I.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Nine point four is to receive notification of the Hingham High School Spring Coaching Recommendations, which are in the packet. Did you want to say anything about that, Dr. Austin?
Yeah, Jared, this is again, the notification that we give on every season, on the coaches that are appointed by the athletic department in high school or any other schools, middle school, et cetera. So you have those in your packet if you have any questions. But again, these are just simply the notifications of those positions.
Great. I noticed we had a number of volunteers or booster-supported coaches on there, so I just wanted to thank everyone who volunteered or supported the extra coaching. Next.
Sorry, Karen, I'm sorry. I just had a quick question on the booster stipends. And Paul, you may not know the answer, but maybe Mr. Quatroy, you could follow up with it. I'm just curious about how the booster stipends are determined? Like, do booster parents decide it? Does the athletic department decide it? Are they similar dollar amount paid? I don't know if you know the answer to that, but...
I don't, I don't know. Mr. Ferris is on the line. Do you know if that stipend is the same? And Mr. Swanson's on as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is the same. I think that there may be some that they figured are going to be paid at an assistant level and I think there's some where there just may be a level of a stipend that the boosters would provide. I would certainly have to ask Jim for sure on that though, unless Rick, you know?
No, I think you're right, John. It would be helpful to get Jim Quatroy to weigh on this as well, but I do know there's a degree of variation depending on the sport and the number of students who are involved, the number of students you might be responsible for. And we have assistant coaches who commit at various levels too. We may have some who come in a couple of days a week, whereas others would be there for every single game and practice. So I think the stipends reflect the uniqueness of their particular role as well, but Jim could certainly speak with a lot more detail about that.
All right, nine point five is to consider the homeschool application for the remainder of the school year, 2020 to 2021, and act as appropriate. And this is for student JL in grade five. And Dr. Austin, you're recommending that we approve this?
Yes, this is in your packet tonight and I am recommending that you approve the application for homeschooling for JL, grade five, for the remainder of the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll take a motion.
I'll be glad, I'm glad to make the motion to approve the homeschooling application of JL, grade five, for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Libby. Okay, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
I.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. The application is approved. Next is nine point six, and this is for annual election of school committee officers, which is scheduled for our next meeting, which is May 24th, 2021. So we will be electing a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary at our next meeting. The self-nomination form is in the packet and anyone who's interested in running for an officer position should send a form to Sherry by May 18th. I'm wondering, I know it makes it a little more difficult, we should probably extend that to the 22nd or 23rd, just in case our new member wants to put his name in for anything. So I apologize, Sherry, I just think we made your life a little harder, but we should give him the opportunity. And I'll send it to him now, so he's aware of it. And if he's not interested in doing it, then we can keep it at the 18th, but we should give him the opportunity to, if he's interested. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Michelle?
Sorry, thank you. It's sort of related to this, but I just wanted to say this really quickly before we lose our audience members when we get down to project reports. I did just want to acknowledge, because it is, as we mentioned earlier, Libby's is our last school committee meeting of this current school committee and Libby is leaving us. But I just wanted to thank Jen for joining us this year. We're one down, two more to go, at least, but thank you. I know this was a really difficult year to join the committee, to be here when we were not in person and with all the challenges that were here. And then I'd also like to extend to Carrie a genuine gratefulness for all your work that you've done over this past year, being the leader of this committee. I think anyone who has sat in that chair knows that it's a really tough job and I would hazard a guess that most people who sit in that job think that the year they did it was so hard, right? I had a leadership change or new people, they were fired at the school, school roof collapsed, but I think we can all agree that you wouldn't, Carrie, that you don't care for those people. So thank you so much for all your work this year.
No, thank you.
I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I want to second what Michelle said and also mention, because I think it's important that I will not be sick in any office next year. So that way, you know, it's open that up and individuals, you know, I wanted to encourage individuals to put in their names. Good job.
Thank you very much. Libby?
Well, maybe this is the time for me to say thank you to all of you. And I did not plan a speech tonight because I really can't without crying. So I'm just going to say very quickly, thank you to all of you. It's been a really great honor and privilege and working with the school committee and the administrators and the school departments and the teachers and everybody else over so many years and I'm not going away, one way or another. Thank you.
We'll still be calling you if we need to wordsmith something in policy, so.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Carrie, can I just say something right before please? Thank you, Libby, on behalf, we really didn't have that, I probably should have made this in my first part of today, but just to echo everything that everybody has said, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. And on behalf of my fellow administrators, the, all of our teachers and our entire staff, I want to thank you for your incredible dedication, your support of our school system, your support of our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and of course, your, the biggest support of all of our students that attend Hingham Public Schools. And if it pleases the, or if I could be approved by the chair, I'd love to be able to give you a presentation for me on the, when we are going back to open meetings, which I hope is the end of June. If we can so schedule that at that time, I'd really be appreciative of just giving her an appreciation in person.
That's great. Yep, absolutely. Well, we'll see. So I kind of want to work soon to do that, but yeah, well, that's great. Yeah, so, okay, so we're all set with that. Next is nine point seven, discussion of the CPAC Town Hall. So, Dr. Austin, did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, just quickly, I attended the CPAC Town Hall last week. It was our first in-person meeting in fourteen months. We did it socially distanced and very appropriately within the guidelines of DCE and state and federal regulations. I want to appreciate everyone who attended that evening, asked great questions. The communication's really important and I encourage us to continue these important conversations. But I know that the rest of the committee also attended, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank CPAC for organizing. It was a great discussion and all the parents who attended and shared their concerns and their experiences. I thought it was a great turnout for a Monday night in May and it was the first school meeting since March, so I thought that was good. And Dr. Austin, thank you for attending and addressing some of the concerns and listening and to Dr. Venice for attending and listening too. So I took minutes of the meeting and I thought they were on the agenda for tonight. I apologize, I'll put them on for the next meeting. My big takeaway from that is I kind of drafted, listed all the concerns just to have a record of them. My big takeaway is that parents are kind of looking for some action steps, kind of update, like where... like where have we been, where are we now, where are we going, and how are we going to get there? I don't know if anyone else had any thoughts coming out of that meeting.
Yeah, I guess what I kept thinking when I heard everybody voice their concerns is just the equity of the issues surrounding the kids who have got, you know, who are on IEPs and five oh fours. And, you know, I take that work back to the equity team. So I heard those messages loud and clear. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Michelle, did you have something to bring up?
No, thanks, Carrie. I was just going to say that, yeah, I think a big takeaway I had heard was some communication around action steps and what will come next. So I think we can work on that. I know we have a lot of work to do over the summer. School may be ending in twenty-something days, but this work is not. So I think there's some really great things that came out of it. And I really thought it was well done. Appreciate everyone who was there, and I do think it was a great beginning conversation. And I'm grateful, Dr. Austin, that you offered to continue hosting those types of meetings because I think they are really important.
And if I can just quickly, to the chair, that it is Dr. Venice is planning on doing a three-year review of this special education program. This is the end of her third year with the district, so she'll be giving a third-year review. And we'd like to give that in person in July. I think that's what she would like to do that, which will highlight what has been done over three years as well as where are we heading to the future. And I think it will answer some of those questions about action and what we can expect. So a great takeaway, and I think July is the perfect time to really bring that forward and start the new year fresh with some thought about where we're going.
That's great. And we will, when we're meeting in person, we're going to do, make every effort to make sure that it's available for parents in real time. I know it usually is through Harbor Media, but if we want, if we can figure out a way to have people zoom in if they have questions and comments, too. Because I know there's a lot of interest and people go away in July. So we'll try to make it as easy as possible for people to participate. Okay, so that is good. Nine point eight is to discuss and approve Kids in Action rates for the twenty twenty-two school year and act as appropriate.
Great. I'll start because, and first, this is just the good news of, again, coming back to programming next year and bringing KIA back. In order to do that, we annually set the rates for KIA. And so I'll turn this over to Mr. Ferris, or Jackie Solins also here. Thank you for attending, Jackie. I'm glad to see you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. So we were fortunate this year, so we were able to run two sessions of Kids in Action. So we kept the pre-K program going, which we're very excited about. And we did that deliberately because we wanted to make sure that, you know, in September, that we can have a full four Kids in Action program going for FY twenty-two. And we're hopeful that that process is going to continue. With that in line, Jackie and I were discussing, you know, rates for the FY twenty-two year. And, you know, basically, the thought was that since we didn't really run the before-school program, the after-school program, or combined before and after-school program, that we would hold those rates constant. And then we thought about the pre-K program, since we did run the programs. And there's two of them. They each run for five days. One of them is a three-hour program daily from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. And the other is a four-and-a-half-hour program Monday through eight-thirty o'clock. You all have the schedules in your packet, I believe. I could flash it if you think that would be helpful, or we could just discuss it. So what we're proposing for kindergarten pre-K program for FY twenty-two is really a three percent increase. In the packet that we've provided to you, we're showing what a two percent increase would look like. For example, that would be fifty thousand, five thousand fifty dollars a year. Three percent is what we're recommending, which is at fifty-one hundred dollars per year. And those payments typically are broken up by ten months. So that would be a payment of five hundred and ten a month, a ten-month service. For the four-and-a-half-hour program, we're recommending three percent at seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars a year, which would be a payment of seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Also, in the packet that you have, Jackie has provided some comps for other programs that were over in the area, and we sort of provided those comps in whole and also broke it down to hourly rates. And what we find is, you know, Kids in Action hourly rates are very, very competitive. And it's a Class A program. It's a great program. The fact that we're less expensive has no reference on the type of program it is. It's just that I think we provide an incredible service to the community. So also, what we have provided in the packets, we've also shown what a five percent increase would be, which is five thousand two hundred for the three-day, excuse me, for the three-hour program, or seven thousand five hundred sixty dollars for the four-and-a-half-hour program on a daily basis. And each of these go for a hundred and sixty-seven days for the year. So if you see in your packet, the schedule that we're presenting is, you know, those with the revised schedule of a three percent increase. And Jackie did the comps, looked, and we thought we were very competitive. Jackie, I'll turn it over to you if you wanted to say something. Or, you know, you could ask Jackie how the year went with the program. Maybe a few comments would be appropriate.
Yeah, actually, the school year went very well, all in all, because we weren't able to have the full-day program. So we had twenty children enroll. So we divided the children into two groups of ten. So we had a morning program that was three hours and an afternoon program that was three hours. So we were very thankful to be able to run it. We weren't sure how it was going to work with all the guidelines. But it was very successful, and from that, we learned a lot of new things and new techniques. And all in all, I think there were a lot of benefits to it. For next year with the increase, I just, I want people to understand and to know that, you know, Kids in Action is a great program. And because it is less expensive, it doesn't mean that the quality isn't there. So the teachers are all qualified, they work hard, they've been here for a number of years. Our goal is to prepare the kids for kindergarten. And because we're in this school, we're able to work with the kindergarten teachers to make sure that we have the skills, kids have the skills they need. We also are able to do the toolbox learning we do. We follow the schools and we teach that to the kids, the second step program, also the lively letter program, which is part of the kindergarten curriculum. So we just give a quick introduction to it in pre-K, so that when they get to kindergarten, they're at least familiar with it.
And I just think that one thing, too, where we're very fortunate, we, you know, through the pandemic, even though we weren't able to hold the entire Kids in Action program, we're very fortunate. We were able to keep all the teachers. We had, you know, jobs for all of them. You know, many of them became parents and took other roles within the organization's long-term subs. You know, one was at least a bus monitor. So, you know, I think through the whole thing, Jackie, maybe one person retired. I'm not sure of the exact count, but, you know, we're fortunate. We have our complete staff back, and we're excited to get them back doing the job that they were really sort of initially hired to do next year.
Absolutely. We did have two people who retired, but everyone else has been on in some capacity in the schools.
That's great. And every parent I've talked to that's gone, have children go through the program, just raves about it. So thank you for what you do, and I'm excited to get back to normal next year or something like it. Does anyone in the committee have any questions or comments about this? Liza?
Oh, I don't really understand why we're not increasing the regular program rates because we have to pay, when we be paying a staff a cost of living increase, are we keeping their rates flat?
No, we would be providing an increase to them, you know, similar to other increases we've provided throughout the district. I think the thought was, Liza, that since we didn't hold the program last year, that, you know, that we didn't want to go up. I mean, clearly, it's the school committee's decision, so we certainly could. We thought that, let's get the volumes back, let's get all the kids back and the enrollment up there. And then, you know, because before we went there, it's a very successful program, and it certainly contributed to the operating budget. I guess you're never certain about where enrollment's going to be. So the pre-K program's very popular. We were able to run that. We know that's very competitive pricing. You know, the after, the before-school, after-school, combined before and after-school, we don't know if parents have made alternate plans. We don't know. So we didn't really want to go up. We're still very competitive, but we just thought we would, the recommendation would be to leave it alone this year. But clearly, we are competitive to the extent that if the committee thought we should have an increase, we could certainly include one.
Jackie, have you heard if parents are looking to come back? Or have some people changed their jobs, and so then, do you know anything?
So we started our enrollment process for next year. It's coming in very slow. So typically, we can have a total of about two hundred and twenty-five children. It's usually what we end up with, and right now, we're at close seventy-five. This is the first week that we started registration for new families, families who have not been Kids in Action before. And with today being the first day, we only had about six new people come in. So I am concerned that either people have found other things, you know, daycare, babysitters, things like that.
Okay, then, you know, that probably justifies keeping it flat. Michelle, did you have?
I was going to reiterate that as a parent who used Kids in Action, it absolutely is a phenomenal program. And I'm so grateful that the town offered it then and continues to offer it. So thank you, Jackie, to you and your staff. Yeah, and then as far as the rates, I can see exactly where John and Jackie are coming from. Because I do think that as, you know, people are working remotely much more these days and companies are being much more flexible with hours worked, you know, it's sort of not nine to five anymore. So I think we'll see the people come back as, you know, offices start reopening in Boston. But I think that it's going to be a little slower than we would ordinarily seen. So if it's an enticement, an inducement to get people to come back with having more than reasonable rates, I would be supportive of that.
It's a great social program, too, for the kids as well, you know? I mean, that's, so even if, you know, you have a still working parent working at home and stuff, we're hopeful that we'll get into the year and then everybody say, hey, Kids in Action's going again. You know, and they're going to want to stay with their friends and, you know, anticipate in the program. So it's sort of like we're going to be on a stage where we, especially on the program, we didn't have sort of a buildup again, I think. And hopefully, you know, hopefully, numbers come in stronger than we would anticipate, even after we start the year.
Carlos?
I just want to say hi to Jackie and say to her that I missed seeing her in person. She's one of those staff that shows up to every single school committee, meeting. So we hope to see you soon, and I want to commend you on a job well done. Hopefully, we will find your house where you can post your program one of these days. So I just want to say that and I echo what everyone is saying. This program is almost, it's almost you have to rebuild it again, right? Put the word out, and to Michelle's point, there is a lot of parents, you know, staying home. So they're more flexible and perhaps they will not even need this service anymore. So let's hope for the best, but, you know, take advantage of our high school communication team. And perhaps they can do a PSA for you and put it out there.
Right, thank you very much.
Some PR.
I think I agree with the recommendation, too. It was a long, but so was saying, we should, if the cost of living increases, we should cover those. But it sounds like it's going to be a building year as of now. So I will take a motion, or if everyone agrees, we can take a motion to go with the recommended rate.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kids in Action rates for the twenty twenty-two school year as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, next is tennis subcommittee. Thank you, Jackie. Tennis Subcommittee and Project Reports. Michelle, do you want to kick it off?
Yep, I just have, I don't want to have anything to report. Dr. Austin and I hosted our monthly Metco call last week with some Metco families and talked to them about how the reopening was going and it seemed to be very positive. The CPAC Forum we just discussed, Special Subcommittee is meeting on Wednesday, time to eleven-thirty. We are actually going to meet in person at the school conference room. That is for the committee. The town hall is still closed. So folks can zoom in as well to the meeting. There will be a Zoom access as well. Hopefully, it goes okay. We're going to try it. And then tomorrow, there is, I think, Wednesday night, there is a Foster School, if I can correct on?
Yep, it'll be Foster School and PRS.
And PRS Windows, I totally.
Yeah, both of those projects, the Fast and Furious right now. So we're getting, we're getting them all organized. You know, of course, they all start at the beginning of the year. So we got the OPM on board for the Foster project. That OPM was approved by the MSBA last week, and they're going to give their first presentation to the Building Committee on Monday, excuse me, this Wednesday. And the building, the OPM for the Windows projects been sort of engaged for a couple of months. And they're going to give the update on the Windows on Wednesday as well. So Wednesday will be a busy night. But, and then, you know, we'll get it organized, just Fast and Furious right now, between meeting MSBA requirements and then trying to get the Building Committee, you know, with making all the decisions and letting the OPM figure out how we do our business and hang up.
Thank you. Jen, do you have anything?
All I have is that the Foster School Council will meet for the last time this school year on this Wednesday.
Thank you. Carlos?
If I forget, that just whenever you want to save the date, June eleventh, it's a Friday. You may get to see one another in person. So that's, there is SNAP help, you know, help, you know, raise some funds for SNAP so they can help our students. It is, again, Friday, June eleventh, from six PM to nine PM. If you'd like to go, you can speak to either myself or Carrie Neay, and we'll take your money. The Plymouth River School Council met today. Principal Smith and, Jesus, I forgot our vice principal there. They're very excited about the Windows, you know, moving along and we're getting, you know, approved for the money on Saturday. They are looking forward to do the presentation of the school improvement plans next meeting in twenty-four. So that's that, and I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos, Libby?
So I'm going to have a hard time getting through this because I just realized that I'm going to give a report on the South School Council. And it was eighteen years ago that I put my son on the school bus to go to South School for kindergarten and sit on Long Hall. And we met the school council on April twenty-eighth, and Mary Eastwood just walked us through all of the things that are going on. And there's just so much, and it all had to be read. You know, the kids are back in the building, but it's not back to normal. And I mean, just take fifth grade, you know, ceremonies. They've got to split it up into two different groups, and how much work is involved in that? And there's nothing that they can take for granted this year. And it's, you know, that still goes on, and they're still just working so, so, so hard. Yeah, so I just shout out to all of the teachers and administrators again. The end is almost in sight.
Thank you, Libby. Liza? Thank you, Libby. Liza?
Next week, we have Middle School School Council on May seventeenth and on May nineteenth, salary negotiations are in meeting with the food service workers for their continuation of their collective bargaining agreement negotiation.
Thank you. And then let's see, for policy, we met to go over the handbooks. So now that we are, we approved the new policy manual, we have to make sure that our handbooks are, are consistent with that. So our plan is to update the policy citations to reflect the new ones and we want the final online version of the handbooks to contain links to the policies in case anyone wants to look at it. We did discuss that the Hingham High School handbook probably needs a good look and probably some revision. And I think that's, that's a priority for the administration as well. So what we, our plan of attack is the subcommittee will review the elementary handbooks just to update the policy citations and in some cases summarize the appropriate policies and add a link to the, the policies. But then we'll work with the admin, and then we'll also go through the high school handbook and just make sure everything's consistent and update any references. But then it'll be a project for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three handbook, so just take a look at it and, and look at that. So that was that. Anyone have anything under forty-eight hours? Not seeing anything. I will see, take a motion to adjourn then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Sorry, Carlos, be the adjourned.
I was gonna let Libby do that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I, I take, I take my, I take my motion back. Libby, it matters all year.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Michelle, second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Thank you, Libby.
Aye, thank you, Libby.
Carlos?
Aye, thank you, Libby.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi, thank you, Libby.
And I, I'm an aye as well. Thank you, Libby. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and thank you to everyone who hung in with us for this long.
Thank you, Libby.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Libby.
Thanks, everyone.